Welcome, everybody. I banged the gavel, but it seems to me that everybody was at attention and waiting patiently for this evening to start. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, January 4th, 2022 Carter County Board of Education Meeting. Excited to have you here. This is a new year. It's going to be an exciting year. I'm fired up. And with that said, I've got Mr. Al Robertson. I'd like you to introduce your people for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Board. Happy New Year to everybody. It is indeed a pleasure to introduce my people today. I've got Mr. Sailor Merrill and little sister, Skyland Merrill. Sailor's a third grader at Harker's Island Elementary, and Skyland's a second grader, and they are the prime example of light in the way, our school motto.
Awesome.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, y'all hold up. I've got something for y'all. Sailors, Skyland, I appreciate y'all coming in here and doing this.
I've got this little certificate of appreciation with a little pin. That walks out of way to Harker's Island for me every day, okay? There you go. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Y'all come head up here, and we'll get everybody's picture.
Here we go.
Y'all did a awesome job there.
Good job.
I'm very good at that.
Okay, on three, right together. One, two, three.
Right together. Thank y'all. Thank y'all.
All right, now, we will have Reverend Goodwin, who seems to do this a lot, do the invocation for us.
Some of you need to pray more than I do. Let's pray. Father, as on this eve of our students going back into our schools, we pray that you keep them safe, safe from those who wish, would wish to do them harm, safe from whatever virus, virus or bacteria might wish to do harm to their bodies. We pray that their minds and their bodies are rested as are our teachers and administrators and support personnel. And we pray, Lord, you be with us this evening as we gather about the business of Carter County Public Schools. Bless our work. Give wisdom to us beyond our understanding. We pray in our Lord's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Goodwin. All right, now we have got Dr. Jackson.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members. The month of January is an opportunity each year for our school system staff, the men and women who serve in our school system, to pause, reflect, and share our thanks and appreciation for the men and women who step forward in service on the Board of Education. This evening, I have a proclamation for this evening. Whereas each year, January is declared as National School Board Appreciation Month, and whereas the men and women serving as members of school boards are dedicated to children, staff members, learning, and community, and devote many hours of service to our public schools as they continually strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education, and whereas the members of the Carteret County Board of Education respond to the educational needs of the schools in this county, and in doing so, these leaders help strengthen our county's educational system and improve our children's futures, and whereas the members of the Carteret County Board of Education are appreciated for their willingness to serve in their roles. Now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim January 2022 as School Board Appreciation Month in Carteret County. Board members, thank you for your service to the children, the families, and the citizens of Carteret County. We certainly appreciate each of you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jackson. So, do we get like a treat every day this month?
Ms. Johnson, first duty.
We're impressed at it. Okay, now we're going to move on to approval of the meeting agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Reverend Goodwin.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Day. All in favor, raise your right hand. Wonderful. Meeting agenda is approved. Now we will move on to the public forum. I am going to read this long sheet that I have to read every time. It is now time for public comment. Anyone present tonight wishing to make comments should have filled out a request to speak public comment form. To ensure civility, relevance, and time management, there are specific requirements for public comment set forth in school board policy. They include: Comments are limited to matters pertaining to public education. The speaker shall state his or her name at the beginning of his or her comment. Speaking time will be limited to three minutes per person. A three-minute timer will appear on the TV screens in the bottom corner. The timer will beep when there are 30 seconds remaining. It will then beep a final time when your time is up. For civility and decorum, no speaker shall make obscene remarks or issue personal attacks or insults. No complaint against a school employee or student will be permitted, although this may be heard in closed session at a later date following consultation with the superintendent. Much information about individual students, including a speaker's own child, is confidential under state and federal law, and we discourage and often prohibit such information in open session. The chairperson may immediately terminate any comments that violate these rules. Board members will not respond to questions except occasionally to request clarification. And with that, our first and only speaker tonight is Ms. Kara Motford.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Motford.
Good evening. How is everybody? Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Congratulations on another year. I wasn't planning on speaking. I'm surprised. I said, well, somebody has to speak, so I came up. I'm just speaking en masse. I know this is a hot-tempered subject. I just really am asking that the board, I see it's on the agenda, I'm asking you to, I know that right now it's optional, I'm asking that you make the mask mandate, put it back in place for the next couple of months, I mean, based on the numbers the county's gone up. And I think at three board meetings ago, I know you have a ratio, and it's pretty much based on science of what the number is, and then you base what you're going to say the mask were to be worn at. And I think we're above that number in the county now. If I'm standing corrected, then I'll hear it here shortly. So I'm just asking that masks are mandated in school again, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Motford. All right, moving right along. The Board of Education is seeking input regarding budget. County parents and citizens are invited to submit comments or appear in person in regards to the school systems 2022-2023 budget for Tuesday, February 1st, meeting of the Carteret County Board of Education. Individuals wishing to speak during public comment time must sign in 10 minutes prior to the February 1st meeting. While the public comment time is open to most subjects, the Board of Education would like to hear from parents and citizens regarding the budget issues in February. Board members are interested in such issues as what items should be included or excluded, areas where help or positions are needed, or areas where change is needed. All individuals wishing to submit comments during public comment time must submit them by email to superintendent@carteretk12.org by 12 noon on the day of the board meeting. However, individuals wishing to speak during the public comment time must sign in 10 minutes prior to the February 1st meeting. Also note that public comment time is limited to three minutes per person. Because of possible time constraints, groups representing the same interest are asked to have one individual submit a comment on its behalf. Please note, public comment in the email subject and provide your name and address. Now I am looking for approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Reverend Goodwin has made a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Wheatley has made a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. Now we have got Mr. Whitford up for a first read.
Mr. Chairman, and board members, the policies for first read tonight are from the North Carolina School Board Association Fall 2021 Update. Most of the revisions reflect minor edits to existing policies. A few revisions mirror modifications in state board policy and changes in federal and state legislation. There are a list of, of, looks like about a dozen, policy revisions, and if you read through them, you could see that most are very modest, or not at all. It might be in the, in the reference at the bottom. I nonetheless am recommending that we, that we administratively withdraw three of these policies from first read. They are still under consideration. Those three are 1720 and the numbers after it, 1725 and the numbers after it, and 1726 and the numbers after that, too. They are all Title IX policies. On Title IX is nondiscrimination, sexual harassment, and also the grievance process respecting Title IX. You now have strong Title IX policies, and even though these changes are very minor, we have the, we have those policies under review to make sure that not only do we meet the requirements of the Title IX federal law, but we fit them into what's best for Carteret County. And that's what we still have under review. It's not complete at this time. So with respect to the first read, administratively, we are withdrawing those, and the first read will be for the remainder of the policies.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Whitford. That was excellent. Next up, we've got Ms. Carswell.
Good evening, board members. I'd like to present Budget Revision Number Two. This budget revision is an amount of $637,047.91. The first section of the budget revision is the federal funds, and this is to appropriate funds that we received for child nutrition bonuses for the ESRS funds, and that is an amount of $56,328. The next section is the capital fund, and this is to appropriate the carryover funds for the capital projects from 2021 year, and then to also appropriate the bond carryover funds from 2020-2021. The total amount of the capital funds is $427,454.30. The last section is the special revenue funds, and this is to appropriate the reserve fund balance for the special grants programs from 2020 and 2021, an amount of $153,265.61. Any questions regarding any of these revisions?
Do I have any questions? Perfect. That was excellent, as always.
Thank you.
I am looking now for a motion to consider Budget Revision Number Two. Ms. Wheatley has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Chadwick, a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Now we have Dr. Jackson up on face covering requirements.
Thank you, and good evening again, board members. Before I start on this evening's update on our COVID-19 operations, I do want to mention that our new Chief Communications Officer, Ms. Jennifer Johnson, is with us. This is her first board meeting. She's two days on the job, doing an amazing job, so we very much appreciate Ms. Johnson and looking forward to continuing to serve with her going forward. Welcome, Ms. Johnson. Board members, as you know, each month by state statute, you are required to review and update the face covering policy for the school system. And as I have for the last three months, I'd like to share with you our metrics since the last board meeting. Interestingly, for the January board meeting, we've only had seven and a half school days since the last board meeting. So our student numbers are somewhat skewed this month from the standpoint of there's only been seven and a half school days since the last time we met. We are looking forward to our students returning tomorrow. However, we do have several changes I do want to mention to you. On December 31st, the last day of 2021, I received an email that the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Strong Schools Public Health Toolkit had been updated. I've lost track of how many revisions we've had since it was first published. Many, many would be the answer to that, but they have made some multiple changes to the toolkit that were made as we were on our holiday break, and so these will go into effect, or at least are in effect, in the toolkit for your consideration this evening. I just want to highlight some of the bigger or the changes that stand out. The first is, and really more of a review, staff and students who have symptoms regardless of vaccination status should get tested and isolated from others while waiting for a result. It's always been true in the school system that if someone's not feeling well, we hope that they'll stay home until they're feeling better and come back to school. The second bullet that I've highlighted there says that staff and students who test positive regardless of vaccination status and do not have symptoms should isolate from others for five days, then wear a mask for five additional days. The board will remember that when we first started down the exclusion and quarantine path, the quarantine time was a 14-day quarantine. Later, options were put in for 10 and seven days, and the board did authorize the 10- and seven-day options at that time, and now the change has been made for a five-day quarantine as possible. For staff and students who test positive regardless of vaccination status and have symptoms, they should isolate from others until they're fever-free and symptoms are improving, and then should isolate for at least five days since symptoms began, and then wear a mask for five additional days as listed in the toolkit. The third bullet there has to do with students and staff who are exposed or close contact to somebody who has COVID-19. Those who are not vaccinated are to stay away from others for five days, get tested on day five after exposure, and if they test negative, return to school while wearing a mask for five additional days. Those who are vaccinated and eligible for a booster but not yet boosted should stay away from others for five days, get tested on day five after exposure, and if they test negative, return to school while wearing a mask for five additional days. And those who are vaccinated and have either received a booster or not yet eligible for a booster, they do not need to stay away from others, but should wear a mask for 10 days. I would point out that all of those changes continue to appear under the heading of "all schools should," giving the Board of Education flexibility in the operations that we've had going forward. In terms of our current protocols, as we have been since, really, this started in June 2020, as I was arriving in the school system, we've had as our guiding document the Strong Schools North Carolina Public Tool Health Kit, Public Health Toolkit, as revised multiple times. The board has made changes to our protocols as the metrics have allowed. The first change made just after Week Six was no contact tracing by school system staff during lunch, no contacting of parents of a close contact if the student was appropriately wearing a mask. The next change was effective after the ninth week. No contact tracing during breakfast or snack, no contact tracing during extracurriculars, athletics, or non-school events. The next change, Change Four, was to make face coverings optional. That was made after, following Week 11. Last month, at the December board meeting, the board made additional changes following Week 16, so one week before we broke for the holiday period. Those changes included those returning from a quarantine at Day Seven or Day 10 should not be required by school system staff to wear a mask through Day 14. Also, school system staff will use three feet as the close contact distance for contact tracing. School system staff will treat individuals with positive antibodies or a positive COVID test the same as vaccinated individuals for purposes of contact tracing and exclusions from school. Next, school system staff will communicate in writing required information to the Health Department. Any requests from the Health Department for additional information or to provide the school with information about potentially quarantined students must also be received in writing. And then finally, requests from the Health Department for an individual to be excluded from school must be received in writing. I appreciate the process the board has gone through, as we've gone through this school year, to use data and multiple points of data to make the decisions that you've made. Consequently, we've been able to remain in school all year. Our students have been present for many more instructional hours than they were able to last year or the year before, and we know that that's because we've been very careful. The board has been very careful throughout. The first report I have here for you, this graphic is our daily student case count, and as I have the last several months, I'll indicate where those operational changes have been made, and so we're able to take a look at even as those operational changes were made, the impact upon the school system as we move forward. Note that last change, Operational Change Four, was from last month. There were actually eight days, technically seven and a half. That Friday was early release day. After that last change, you'll note five of those eight days, we had zero or one case. That was the last eight days of school prior to the winter holidays. We did have two days, one at six and one at five. In looking at our weekly student case count comparing to the previous year, the blue is 2020-2021, the red is this current school year, you'll see that our weekly case count went up to 13 after being down for about three weeks, still not as high as it was four weeks prior. We are trending, as of Week 17, which is the last completed week of the school year to date, lower than we were in 2020-2021. Again, very quickly, the four operational change periods, and so you can see any impact that might have been realized as a result of that change. The next item is our student and staff exclusion count, counting the number of students or staff members who were quarantined either by being a positive, having, being positive for COVID, being a close contact as determined and quarantined by the Health Department, or having to exclude because of being a contact. Here we see that for the 17th week, we had a slight increase over the 16th week, again, the four change points that the board has made as we've gone forward, and we're able to see that we are certainly at the end of December in a much better place than we were at the beginning of the school year. This particular graphic looks at the percentage on a daily basis of the students excluded using our attendance data. And so, looking just into Power School to see how many students are present or not present, when a student is either positive or has been quarantined or excluded, they are coded as a 1R in Power School. And so you'll see on the last week of school, we continue to have a low percentage of our students excluded from school, and the last day of school, that was 1.61%. And so that was a lower number as well. Certainly getting a lot of attention recently has been our county positivity rate. Throughout the school year, I've shared this information with you on a weekly basis. We appreciate the Carteret County Health Department for sharing this with us. You will note that the county positivity rate has gone up over the last couple of weeks. Yesterday's report was at 11.9%. And finally, one of the metrics the board asked to be, to have reported to you was the percentage of our quarantined students testing positive. And so, in other words, those who were quarantined as a close contact, how many went on to test positive based on reports back from the parents. If they had tested positive, you'll notice that the last week, Week 17, that dropped to 2.2%. So of our students who are being quarantined, only 2% went on to test positive. That concludes our data presentation for the evening. Certainly be happy to answer any questions that any board members might have.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Does anybody have any thoughts or questions?
We do have a question. Today during the press conference, a reporter asked about medical-grade mask for staff members, and it was, they did reply that it would be available for schools to request those for staff. So are we going, of course, we want our staff to feel safe, and if that's something we can request, is those masks for those that want it, is that something that we can do quickly?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. The press conference that Ms. Statler is referring to, the governor had a press briefing and then answered questions from reporters, and one of the announcements made by the new Secretary of DHHS is the availability of the N95 mask for school system staff members, and gave a website address for us to make that request. It's my intention to make that request and then make that available to any staff members who might ask to wear those masks. We happy to provide those for them.
Thank you. Any other questions or thoughts?
So on the slideshow where it talks about the quarantine days and if you're vaccinated but not boosted?
Yes, ma'am.
Where is that?
There we go.
Okay, but then there's another piece to the toolkit that says you can wear a mask from Day Zero to Five instead of?
Yes, ma'am.
Isolating or isolating?
In the toolkit, it says for those persons who are vaccinated, eligible for a booster but have not been boosted, and it's imperative, their attendance is imperative, they may wear a mask for the full 10 days and not have to quarantine. And so that is, that is available and appropriate as according to the toolkit.
So it's whether or not it's feasible, correct?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That was a vaccinated and boosted?
No, you did just.
Vaccinated.
Were vaccinated but not boosted.
Not boosted.
Okay. You could wear a mask from Days Zero.
So is that something that we need to make in a motion?
And as part of our current operating procedure, we are treating, trying to, we're trying to treat people who have already had COVID or a positive antibody test the same as we have vaccinated people. So I guess that would apply to them as well, unless we make a change. Correct? Correct.
That is correct. Yes.
So that's great news, then. That'll cut down on the number of quarantined people significantly. I did have a question, too. Wanted to make sure, the, I think there's been a little bit of confusion. Some staff have mentioned that the, as far as positive tests, they, that sometimes they're only, we've been only accepting PCR tests, whereas the toolkit and otherwise have been, have said that the PCR or the antigen test are acceptable. So I wanted to make sure we're consistent across the board, and I think that's what the toolkit says, so I don't want some people getting the idea that, oh, we're only going to accept the PCR. It should be both.
Yes, sir.
And I do think consistency, we've talked about that a lot, is something we really need, and I know Dr. Jackson said that was going to be discussed at the principals' meeting, is just being sure if your kid is quarantined at the, or exposed at the middle school or the high school level, whatever, that it's all consistent, that everyone's got the same protocols in place, because that's been a source of a lot of confusion, I think.
Absolutely, and as the board knows, we have made countless changes from July 1st, 2020, when we had a meeting in this room of almost six and a half hours, just to try to understand all that we would need to do to open school at that time. I'm very proud of all the changes we've had to make, but there have been a lot of changes, and so it's easy to have some sort of slippage or drift when you have about 1,100 employees trying to understand the myriad of changes that keep being made on a regular basis. Thursday is our monthly principals' meeting. We're going to review the protocols again with all of our principals to make sure that we're all in line and we're in alignment with how we're approaching all of our operational guidance, particularly in light of any decisions the board may make this evening.
And can you speak a little bit more to the, the new CDC guidelines for the shortened five-day quarantine, because I guess that's something that we may be considering tonight.
Yes, sir. Based on that change by the CDC, allowing for a shortened quarantine of five days, the toolkit was changed to put that in the toolkit, and so certainly that's something, just as the board considered, and then ultimately approved the seven-day and the 10-day shortened quarantine protocol for our school system, that is available for the Board of Education to consider this evening, the approval or not of a five-day shortened quarantine for school system staff and students.
Thank you.
And with that, are we able to also, I know things are a suggestion, the five additional days where they come back and they have to wear a mask, is that also something that we can reconsider?
And our current policy, the way, unless we change something, our current policy is we are not requiring, requiring masks after the shortened quarantine period. Right now, it's seven, 10.
But still, even after five, we can consider, okay.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts or questions to Dr. Jackson? Very good. Does anybody have a motion that they would like to present this evening?
Sure. For me, and I don't want to speak for
Sure. For me, and I don't want to speak for all you guys, I know, I think all of us have the core belief, whatever we're doing and making these decisions is in the best interest of all the students and staff, even if we don't agree. I think we agree we're all coming from the same place. In August of 2021, we did mandate masks. For me, that was for two reasons personally. One was absolutely legally. I felt like that was what we were legally bound to do by the toolkit and what we were recommended to do. The other was for a commitment to provide a safe environment for all of our students. That included the immune compromise that we spoke with, the parents of autistic children that talked about their kids not being able to wear a mask and that we weren't giving them that choice. Now, thankfully, in our county, all of our students do have availability to be vaccinated if that is something their families have chosen for them. I know I only have, of course, the decision to make the vaccination choice for my family and never want to make that decision for any other families. But due respect, if that's something anyone's chosen to do, they now absolutely have the ability. All the pediatrician's office has confirmed that they are readily available for any of our students. So with that, I would like to make the motion to continue mask optional, adopt the new five-day quarantine as provided in the toolkit, retroactive for any staff that are currently in quarantine, and continue that any bullying directed towards any individuals choosing to wear a mask or not to be aware, a mask will not be tolerated.
And one clarification, and then I'm assuming, and we're continuing all of our previously passed?
Continuing?
Yes, great. Thank you.
And we're going to do the zero to five if you're vaccinated?
Sure, because that's what we've already got in place.
Right.
Great.
Wonderful. I've got a motion by Ms. Statler. Do I?
I'll second it.
I've got a second by Reverend Goodwin. Do we have any more discussion on this? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Perfect. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Richie Paylor is up.
Good evening, board. I don't have a lot for you this evening. For our capital projects, the last time we talked, I told you we were having problems getting paint. Well, the good news is we got paint, so we think we have enough to finish the project. So hopefully, the painting will roll on and will be done in a matter of weeks. For the bond projects, the doors are being finished up. We're down to a punch list, so that's taking place now. Newport Elementary School, that project, the roofing project was in two parts. So the first part, which was the cafeteria building and the walkway connecting the two buildings, that is complete, and they have mobilized to the 200 building, which is the kindergarten building which connects to that. So that project continues. And also, the last time we talked, I told you that the bid for the East Carteret Bond Projects would be tomorrow. That actually got moved to a week from tomorrow. It's moved to January 12th, and that's due to, there were some addendums made in that project just to give the bidders time to get their bids together. So that'll be bid next Wednesday. Any questions?
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Very good. Thank you, Richie. Mr. Paylor. All right, now we've got comments from Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, board members. And as Richie is having his seat, I will mention that Mr. Paylor and Mr. Moretti and Mr. Height did a phenomenal job presenting to our county commissioners at their last meeting of December, a bond update, the same update that the Board of Education had received prior. And so I appreciate their presentation to our county commissioners. Board members, the arrival of 2022 has been anticipated as few New Years before it. The COVID-19 pandemic continues to hang on and impact daily life in a myriad of ways, from quarantines to required face coverings. The resulting global supply chain issues have driven up prices and driven down the availability of products. A national staffing shortage has caused retail hours to be cut back and slowed services. Depression and anxiety plague the mental and emotional health of countless adults and children. All of these negatives have contributed to a near-universal longing to turn the page and move forward into a new year and new opportunities. We greet the new year with much enthusiasm as we focus our energy and efforts forward. We're proud of all that our students and staff have accomplished while pushing through the challenges of the pandemic. We will not, however, allow the pandemic to define us. Instead, we will continue to serve our students and families and provide opportunities for our students to achieve their full potential. We will continue to support their needs and keep them first and foremost in our decision-making. 2022 will be our finest year yet. I would like to take a moment and recognize some special groups who've made significant investments in our schools during the last month. Blue Water Real Estate surprised me over the break and asked me to stop by because they wanted to make and did make a donation of $15,000 to our traditional high schools to help with student needs, including clothes, hygiene products, et cetera. I'd also like to thank a longtime supporter of the school system and of our education foundation, the Taylor Foundation, for providing a total of $8,000 to East Carteret High School and the Down East Schools to help with student and family needs in those schools. We're especially grateful for all those who step forward to support our students, families, and schools. I'd like to wish each of our students, teachers, staff members, administrators, parents, board members, and community members a very happy new year. We have been, we are, and we will remain Carteret Strong. Mr. Chair, this concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Board members, does anybody have any questions or thoughts or anything they'd like to say? I mean, y'all have been quiet for about a year now, so leave it up to me.
Would like to, in December, we had the PAC meeting, and that went well at West Carteret. It was good to hear from all the folks there, to have a room full of folks, because we had a lot of schools represented. At the, toward the end of that meeting, I made a comment about the mental, social, emotional health. And I pondered it since then, and I likened it to a cup in my mind since then, that some of our students, the challenges they faced, whether they wear a mask or don't wear a mask, no matter what the curriculum is, they come into the classroom every day with tremendous challenges. One hole that would seep water wide be from home. Whether they have heat, whether they have two parents who love, or one or two parents who love them. Another would be the bullying that all of us hear from time to time that just seeps away at their ability to learn. It might be a mental or physical handicap that is challenging them. And in this pandemic time and time when people are pulled apart, I think it's more important than ever that we pay attention to all this, and that when we consider monies, realize that it's not a level playing field. And a significant percentage of our students come to school every day unloved, unappreciated, and undervalued. And we just want to do whatever we can to help them in the learning process so that they can learn. That's all.
Thank you so much, Reverend Goodwin. I'd echo your sentiments. You know, fortunately, we have a school system that, in my opinion, cares a lot more than many other school systems in the state, and that's what makes this a beautiful.